Hi, of the United States of America, public which stands. White star on a field of blue. I'm in love that we.
Commissioner Oliver.
Present.
Commissioner Piercey.
Here.
Commissioner Rather. Commissioner P.
Here.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Irvin.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Chairman Phillips.
Present.
McAdoo.
Here.
Mac Murray.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serenio.
Yeah.
When present.
Thank you, Lisa. This time we'll come to item E on our agenda. This is the only item that's on our agenda. We usually have public comments at every commission meeting that I've ever been to. We don't have public comments on our agenda, but we've had three people to sign up. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow those three people and those three people only to speak to the topic that's on our agenda tonight.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion carries. First on the list is Candy Joyce. I'll remind you, as you're coming up, you've got three minutes. My hammer is hard.
Thank you, Chairman Phillips, and to the commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm Candy Joyce. I'm the Executive Vice President for the Middle Tennessee Association of Realtors and proudly represent fourteen hundred and more Realtors in Rutherford County and another thousand plus from the eight other counties that we also serve in Middle Tennessee. For almost thirty years, I've worked with these residents, voters, volunteers, community servants, and advocates for this county and pleased to see what they've added to our quality of life in the county. We are a service industry, meeting the needs more than creating growth and making sure that the quality of life continues. Whether it's a house from raw land, a new shopping destination, or opening doors for minorities and legal immigrants for their location to our country and our county, we serve. We respectfully request that you vote against the proposal tonight. Over the last few weeks, we've had an opportunity to watch the process at the state legislature, never having been invited to the discussion of amending an existing state law that we, together with other previous commission members and our real estate professionals, help to create for you all to have the funding for needed projects. Realtors are always helping in this county. We serve in elected positions here. We serve on appointed boards to the county commission. And where many volunteer hours spent for community programs, raising money for schools, for social services, and for housing opportunities. When asked, we answer and we serve. Being a part of the solution makes our county stronger, and we want to continue to do so. Many new county commissioners may not be aware of how many times the Realtors and builders and developers have compromised and assisted with the funding options for our county, for our home, for the last several decades. We were the first to step up when Ed Shirley came to us and said they needed computers for the county classrooms. We flat out funded it. No discussion. We came back and negotiated the creation of the development tax, the seven hundred and fifty dollars at that time. And when you came back and said you needed to double it, we negotiated that as well to the fifteen hundred dollars, but asking that we have the opportunity to split the cost of the payments. We've always been able to help working on these issues. We were very instrumental in helping to create the adequate facilities tax that you now have and transfer us from the development tax to the adequate facilities tax that you're collecting today. In the past, we've been included in the conversation to keep our county strong while feeding our families, enjoying the many laborers, employing many laborers to feed their families, and seeking creative programs and policies to keep our county strong. We recognize that now the other world wide factors have more impact on construction than ever before, and we see this as not a sustainable revenue stream. Shortages on materials, interest rates are spiking, land costs are growing, and more than that continues to eliminate the local builders from our construction industry. You should consider that local municipalities have additional impact fees, such as the thirty-eight hundred dollar fee that's already in place in Smyrna. With this proposed fee, a house in Smyrna would be at least eighty-eight hundred dollars already out of pocket for the builder and the buyer. Realtors are not responsible for the growth. We're a service to the consumer with the availability at hand. And currently, the excessively low inventory has already kept many buyers from purchasing in our county, and this proposal will only slow the replacement of the housing units and allow only multifamily apartment construction. Our ask tonight is that you vote against this proposal.
Mr. Chairman, with her permission, can I ask a couple of questions?
No. Thank you, Ms. Joyce.
Thank you.
Carl Burning.
I'm Carl Burning. I reside at Herschel Hudson Road, Last Castas, Tennessee. I'm a member of the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance, a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. What I want to say about our organization, we attend a lot of these meetings, and if we don't attend them in person, we look at them on YouTube, as I did on the last Steering Committee that we all enjoyed so much. Two hours plus, wasn't it? I want to say that the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance supports the theory that new growth should support new growth. We also realize in our county that seventy-five percent of our revenue goes to our education system and that we are facing seven hundred and forty million plus, is that right, in debt coming up, whether there are fifty-one schools and adding about one a year or something like that. When I observed the special called Steering Committee, I was sorely disappointed by the representation of our, that was spoken from our state delegate in Nashville. It was very disappointing. As to the Steering Committee, also at that meeting, the representatives of the Planning and Steering Departments came up and expressed their, answered their question as to their fees and their structures, and we was discussed increasing those fees to help retire our county debt. The RNA supports substantial increases to the fees from the planning and, what's the other one I just said? These departments to help increase, to decrease our long-term debt. And those increases go directly to long-term debt and not just proliferate into those offices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burning. Susan Allen.
Let's see if this is working. My name is Susan Allen. I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. The Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance has always advocated for an alternative way to pay for growth rather than having the entire burden fall on the property taxpayer. In two thousand and three, twenty years ago, the MTSU Business and Economic Research Center did a study on alternative potential sources for new revenue in Rutherford County. The conclusion then was that exponential population growth put the county between a rock and a hard place. Since then, the rock has become a boulder. Opponents always want you to study more. I'm sorry. We went through that years ago with the Alternative Revenue Task Force comprised of builders, Realtors, commissioners, other civic and interest groups that agreed on an adequate facilities tax based on square footage. It passed by not one, but two unanimous votes of the county commission. The RNA took a two thousand signature petition in favor of it to our legislators in Nashville. The well-funded builders and Realtors lobbied against it and squashed it. No more waiting. They want you to look at all the needs and then budget them. What on earth do they think you've been doing and do every year? No one is saying this is an easy process, but one thing I know for sure is that our commissioners are acutely aware that every budget decision they make will impact the property taxpayers, and they know it has become a real burden for far too many of our residents. A mortgage lender friend told me recently, the monthly mortgage payment on a four hundred thousand dollar home in Rutherford County, which he estimated was about the average price now, is about twenty-two hundred dollars. Adding five thousand dollars to the purchase price would increase that monthly payment by only about seventy dollars. Would seventy dollars extra a month prevent a person from buying a four hundred thousand dollar home? We have a huge population of seniors, low-income retail and service industry workers who would like not to be taxed out of their homes or have to move out of the county because they can no longer afford to live here. So I urge you to send this private act to the state legislature. In the meantime, since that will take quite a bit of time, increase Planning Department and Codes Department fees to address the upcoming budget costs related to growth, infrastructure, and debt. Otherwise, if for some reason you get convinced to delay and study, then a temporary moratorium on new residential building may be necessary while that takes place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. You did good. Item E on our agenda, Rutherford County Adequate Facility Tax Act of two thousand and twenty-three. This is a private act. I'll call on our mayor, Joe Carr, to bring us up to date.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, before I get started, because we have an attentive audience, and I'm going to, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to review some things that the county commission's already aware of, so I would, I would ask for their indulgence because I think some context is important as to how we got to this point. And indeed, I think the question needs to be asked is, what is the problem we're trying to solve? And that is, that is a core question here, and quite honestly, I didn't become acutely aware of the problem until I was sworn in on September first. And I regret that, Mr. Chairman, because I was a legislator for six years, and as a legislator, I had an opportunity to address the problem, and regretfully, on behalf of Rutherford County, I did not. Yet it's all too clear that the problem is twofold. Too many times, we want to confine the problem to a funding issue. Well, the funding issue, ladies and gentlemen, is a product or a byproduct of the real problem. What we have in Rutherford County, unlike other counties, unlike the cities of Murfreesboro, Smyrna, and Laverne, is an inequity in the funding model that relies on the property taxpayers of Rutherford County to subsidize the services required as a result of growth. Let me give you an example. In Rutherford County, every developer who develops a piece of property ostensibly to build houses is required by code to put in roads, sewer, or sometimes sand system, electricity, high-speed internet in many cases, water. They're required to do all of those things. That is by code. But ladies and gentlemen, that is by no means the only services that the county is required to provide. In addition to those services, water, sewer, electricity, high-speed internet, roads, curbs, comes schools, fire, EMS, law enforcement, and in some cases, solid waste pickup. Those services, ladies and gentlemen, are not provided for by the developer. Those services are provided and subsidized by the property taxpayer of Rutherford County. But let me assure you, every home buyer who moves into a new development absolutely expects curbside service if there's a medical emergency. They demand curbside service if their house is on fire, and they fully expect to be able to allow their children to attend the best schools. Indeed, we have some of the best schools in the entire state, and they have a right and an expectation to participate and expect the funding of those services. The problem is, according to Tennessee law, Tennessee Code Annotated sixty-seven dash four dash two nine oh one through two nine one three, referred to as the adequate facilities tax, Rutherford County only has two ways, two ladies and gentlemen, to fund for that growth. The first is referred to as the adequate facilities tax passed in two thousand and six, as Ms. Joyce, Ms. Roberts referred to earlier. The adequate facilities tax was a negotiated deal by then Speaker Jimmy Nethy, the home builders and the Realtors, to deal with a political problem. The political problem at the time, ladies and gentlemen, is that the Tennessee General Assembly did not want to ratify or vote on impact fees or development taxes anymore. They didn't want to do it. Why do you ask they didn't want to do it? Because they didn't want to deal with the mail piece back home when they ran for reelection that said they voted for, say, impact fees or taxes. That's why. That's the only reason. It was a political answer to a problem that didn't exist. So what happened is, in two thousand and six, when this particular piece of legislation was ratified, every county in the state was frozen as to what they had in place at the time. Williamson County, Dixon County, and Wilson County at the time had development fees and/or impact fees that allowed them to raise those impact fees and/or development taxes, in the case of Dixon and Wilson County, as they deemed appropriate by resolution through their county commission. Rutherford County did not. Rutherford County did not have in their resolution a stipulation that afforded them the ability to raise the development tax through resolution. Instead, and Ms. Joyce Roberts is correct, the development tax was created at seven fifty, then another private act was created additionally at seven fifty. But in each case, Rutherford County had to go to the Tennessee General Assembly to seek approval, unlike Dixon County, Wilson County, and Williamson County. So we come, we fast forward, and two years ago, Commissioner Harris brought forth a resolution asking permission from the Tennessee General Assembly to move Rutherford County from the development tax, which was held at fifteen hundred dollars since before two thousand. For twenty years, it had been held, over twenty years, it's been held at fifteen hundred dollars. No indexing for inflation, no indexing for cost increases for services provided, nothing. Frozen. Commissioner Harris, seeing in the opportunity, because the average square footage of a house was approximately twenty-four hundred feet, determined that that would be a better move for the county, and he was correct. The commission was correct. And so the compromise that Ms. Roberts refers to indeed was a compromise, but still, what that, what that did was it only allowed Rutherford County the adequate facilities tax that was earmarked exclusively for schools. Nothing else. No roads, no fire, no EMS, no law enforcement, no solid waste, trash removal. Those services, those necessary services, as a result of expansion because of growth, were left to the property taxpayers of Rutherford County to bear exclusively. So that if a development went in Commissioner Reed's district, a new two-hundred acre development with three hundred homes, those in Last Castas and Milton, by virtue of their property taxes, were paid to subsidize the services necessary to support that growth. That is a fact. I want to remind the audience, there are only two ways, two ways that Rutherford has to, Rutherford County has to fund for growth. The adequate facilities tax, which is a dollar a square foot, that can't be raised more than ten percent every four years. Tennessee Code Annotated sixty-seven dash four dash two nine oh eight. That's the law. The next time we can raise that is in two years. The second way we can fund for the growth is by raising property taxes. Those are the only two ways. Rutherford County does not have an impact fee. Never has. Rutherford County does not have a development tax. We chose, in reference to Commissioner Harris's move two years ago, we chose to move from the development tax, which was capped at fifteen hundred dollars, to the adequate facilities tax. You don't get both. We had to choose, so we chose. But we have not alleviated the situation. Graphic example. In January two thousand and twenty-one, the average cost of a home in Rutherford County, according to RealtorX, was approximately three hundred thousand dollars. January two thousand and twenty-three, the cost of that same home, same size, twenty-four hundred square feet, according to RealtorX, is over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A hundred and fifty thousand dollar gain in two years. And Rutherford County is suffering, bleeding, because we cannot allow ourselves, we do not, we do not have the opportunity afforded to us to allow the growth to pay for itself. Instead, the entire burden is borne by the Rutherford County property tax assessor, property taxpayers. That's why we got to this point. So in October, November, Mr. Chairman, I brought before this commission the idea that we needed to beseech the legislature and our delegation, and so I began putting together the idea that we needed to amend the County Powers Relief Act sixty-seven dash four dash two nine oh one through two nine one three. I met with overwhelming approval through a resolution by this body. Subsequent to that, I asked this body if they would entertain the idea of allowing us, affording us the opportunity to get professional help in Nashville, because this was a very serious matter, and this body voted unanimously to afford us that opportunity. I have no regrets doing either. As a matter of fact, I'd do it again tomorrow, because it was the right thing to do, because every single one of us in here, all of us, are charged with protecting the property taxpayers of Rutherford County. That's who we're charged to protect. That's who I'm going to protect. And I think it's important that we realize why we're here, why I'm here. I'm not going to lecture you. You don't need me to do that, and I won't do that. But I think it's important we remember who we're trying to protect. For over twenty years, the property taxpayers of Rutherford County have borne the burden of the expansion of growth and the services necessary to that growth. And all we're asking is that the home building and the real estate community understand the needs of this community. One more example. Is this body fully, is fully aware, Dr. Sullivan, Superintendent of Schools, came before Health and Ed, and two meetings ago, stated that in the next four years, he is going to ask for seven hundred and forty million dollars in new bond debt. Come to find out, Commissioner Dodd, that number's gone up since then. Seven hundred and forty million dollars. You put that on top of the three hundred and fifty million dollars in school bond debt we have, we're looking at over one billion dollars in school bond debt in the next four years. How are we going to pay for that growth? That's what we're charged with. Nobody is saying, nobody has ever said that we want to stop growth. That is absolutely unequivocally false. What we're saying is, the home building and the real estate community need to step up and pay their fair share. To be quite honest, our county's doing quite well in the growth, as is illustrated by the value in home, property home values. And so we brought a bill before the Tennessee General Assembly. It went through several iterations, trying to find a compromise. We worked with the committee chairmans repeatedly. Over the course of several weeks, we worked with the speaker. We finally had a bill and a compromise that the Speaker of the House, quite honestly, came up with. The deal was, the deal that was finally presented in committee on March twenty-second was a deal that the Speaker, Cameron Sexton, came up with and that we embraced, because it was a starting point. It wasn't an ending point. It was a start point, but we embraced it. And so that bill was permitted and presented in committee by the House sponsor, Scott Zapeke out of Murray County. But unfortunately, the representative from Rutherford County, who sits on that committee, made some pretty outrageous comments, and indeed, for the record, they were grossly in error. And tonight, I've asked Commissioner, Chairman Phillips, if he will allow me to play an eight-minute video, because I think it's important that we rebut the arguments that were made in that committee to set the record straight on exactly why Rutherford County was seeking the help from the Tennessee General Assembly, so we could stop the bleeding of this artery. With your permission, Chairman Phillips.
Massey? Please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Wednesday, March the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. I hereby call the Property and Planning Subcommittee to order. Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll? Chairman Rudd, you recognize.
I believe, I want to, I want to make sure that the members of the committee are not confused, because there's different impact, there's different special acts. And Rutherford, just two years ago, at the request of the commission, went to these square foot, and I was told that they have to wait three years till they can increase it. And we're just a year into the agreement, and they're already wanting to change it. And what we have here is not a tool in the toolbox. It's a shotgun, because they're wanting to have unlimited, the ability to impose unlimited amounts of impact fees to any price they want. The one in Wilson that they were talking about, they said they just wanted a thousand. Now it's at five thousand. And this, this is not to, this plan is not, in my opinion, and what people have told me, supporting with the plan, is not to produce revenue, it's to stop construction and growth. And, but there are different, there are different impact fees, and the county just in an agreement with the legislators up here when we carried it, that they went to the dollar a square foot. Charlie Baum, I believe, carried that, and they have to wait three years, then they can increase it. So we're just a year into the agreement, and they're already wanting to change it.
There are, there is no such thing as a special act. I don't know where that term came from. There are private acts. Rutherford County has one private act regarding this issue, which is covered in Tennessee Code Annotated 67-4-2901 through 2913. One private act. That private act is the private act that Commissioner Harris and that you passed two years ago, regarding the adequate facilities tax. That's the only private act. The representative from the 34th District is incorrect. Rutherford County has no impact fees. None. There are no impact fees. We, there are two ways, I'm going to repeat myself, two ways, that we raise funds to pay for growth. The adequate facilities tax, currently referenced, that I referenced a minute ago, and property taxes. With regard to Wilson County, the representative from the 34th District is correct. Wilson County did start out with a one thousand dollar impact fee. It wasn't an impact fee, it was, it's a development tax, to be absolutely correct. An impact fee and a development tax are quite different. If you want to know the difference, let me explain. A development tax generally means the money goes to the general fund. That's a tax. An impact fee is designed and specifically in code to go for a specific purpose, and can only used for that purpose. Moreover, an impact fee has, you have to, before you can pass a resolution, or an ordinance for an impact fee, you have to do a study. That is required in case law. So before an impact fee can be undertaken, a study has to be done, scoping the purpose, the need, and what the impact fee is for, and how much is to be determined. Rutherford County has no impact fee. But in the case of Wilson County, they don't have an impact fee, as referenced by the representative, they have a development tax. And in 2003, 20 years ago, it is correct. Wilson County passed a development tax for one thousand dollars. Twenty years later, they now have a development tax at five thousand dollars. Wilson County has the luxury, though, in their private act, to afford them to raise their development tax by, through the county commission, as opposed to private act. So it's important to correct the record. Massey?
Unless it's changed, Williamson County is the seventh richest, wealthiest county in the entire nation. It was 11th. I can guarantee you, Murray and Rutherford are not in the top 200, I would imagine. Rutherford is no Williamson County. And our county, and with all due respect, Murray County's growth is nothing compared to what Rutherford's been going through for 50 years, and it will continue to, to a, to a degree. And Wilson, there also are, Wilson, Mount Juliet area, up near the lakes, a lot wealthier area than most of Rutherford County. But as far as Rutherford County, you know, we, we were built, for the last 30 years, what built Rutherford County was affordable starter homes, which is 12, 13, 1500 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath, one-car, and two-car garage. And we can't build hardly any of those anymore, because of land values have gone up so much. And if we, if we tack anymore, attach anymore onto it, it's going to be even more impossible. And that's what causes Atlanta and other major cities have urban sprawl, wouldn't you believe? Because as you get closer to a major city, it becomes unaffordable to, to have an affordable home there.
Nick has corrected me on my vernacular, and it's very important, and I've asked Nick to do this, that we get it exactly right. Facts matter. And so, I've asked Nick, and thank you, Nick, so if you will make the necessary correction, I would appreciate it.
Just real quick.
Thank you.
To clarify, yes, sir. To clarify, the mayor stated that the county had one private act that was two years ago, where we opted into the dollar per square foot. Just to clarify, the private act that I think the mayor was referencing that we had was our development tax private act that was passed over 20 years prior to 2006. What we did two years ago is we moved from that to the school facilities tax for the dollar per square foot, by simply passing a resolution on two separate readings, and that took place of our prior private act development tax.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you. I think where we're trying to go as a community, is we're trying to grow, and we're trying to find the balance between development, residential development, commercial development, and holding those values and those principles that some of us have been here for multi-generations. And that's a, that's a daunting challenge, but it's a challenge that the 21 commissioners and I, in this past election, promised that we were going to do. In order for us to do that, we have to be fair and equitable to all the citizens of the county. Right now, today, we are at a balance with our funding model. The growth comes, and we all appreciate the growth. I do. If you're not growing, you're dying. We have to grow. But we don't need the growth to be borne by the senior citizens who are least available to pay for that growth, who right now are subsidizing that growth. Chairman Reed gave a heartbreaking story, and I hope you repeat it tonight, where he goes and pays his property taxes, and when he was paying his property taxes, an elderly couple in front of him was paying their property taxes with their social security check. Every property taxpayer in here subsidizes the new growth with their property taxes. It costs over ten thousand dollars a year to educate a Rutherford County student, excuse me, almost ten thousand dollars a year to educate a Rutherford County student. That does not include the bond debt, the brick and mortar. It's just the cost of educating a student. We average 1,500 new students in the Rutherford County school system every year. That's 15 million dollars. Michael, what is our adequate facilities tax? Adequate facilities tax, remember, ladies and gentlemen, is where we pay for the education of our children. Can you give us an idea of where we're at on adequate facilities?
As of today, we have collected 74.61% of our budgeted amount. The dollar amount we have collected as of today is 3,655,960 dollars. Our budget this year for adequate facilities tax was 4,900,000. And I will, I will remind, our adequate facilities tax goes directly, half goes to our debt service debt service fund, and half goes to our educational capital projects fund.
The best-case scenario is that we're upside down, 10 million dollars every year, and the gap grows, just on education, just on education. Massey?
I remember it was about, I think it was Candy Roberts with M.T.R. Mayno, or cannot, I believe it was six, I think it was six or seven years ago, that the builders and realtors in Rutherford County had proposed, rather than putting the burden on just new construction, which already builds the roads, the highways, the electrical lines, the ditches, the sewers, the curb and gutter and all that in there, and handed over to the government, that they had had possibly, they had, the builders and realtors had proposed a transaction fee on all real estate closings, because what the impact fee does is it only taxes new construction, which is not only the people moving from California, but us and our children. People in a, in a city, in a county as large as Rutherford, it may not be true, and Murray, you're a lot smaller than us, we have a ton of existing homes, and people moving from out of state aren't paying any impact fee. They aren't paying anything other than their property taxes. And if, if we're going to tax it, it seems like we need a more fair, equitable, across-the-board fee or tax that can probably generate more money and be more fair to everyone involved. And I think that's maybe what you ought to negotiate to help the counties alleviate that, would be, would be something that I would suggest if everybody, if all the parties are still in agreement, rather than just an impact fee. And like I said, from what the very supporters and some in this room, what very supporters have told me of this, the ultimate goal is not to generate revenue, it's to stop growth with a high impact fee.
Don't let me go backwards. Nobody, nobody on this county commission that has spoken to me on this topic has ever said anything about stopping growth. I've never, ever, not one time, heard that term used in any context or inferred whatsoever. I want to make that abundantly clear. I do not know where that comment came from, but that is an absolute complete fabrication. I do not know where it came from. I haven't heard it. And it's dising, it's absolutely disingenuous, because it clouds the issue. This isn't about growth or not having growth. It's about growth, and how do we get growth to pay for itself? That's it, without burdening the taxpayers of Rutherford County who can least afford it. That's what this is about. Moreover, I was quite encouraged by the representative from the 34th District offering a solution. The solution he offered in that video, which I am quite intrigued by, because it was my clear understanding, the real estate community was adamantly opposed to a real estate transfer tax. As a matter of fact, Commissioner Wilson, you and I had a discussion about that very thing. I consulted with you about that issue when crafting the resolution regarding what we were trying to accomplish. I reached out to you specifically because I knew you as a real estate professional, and I asked, what about a real estate transfer tax? And you, and my recommendation was to exempt that from this bill. As a matter of fact, it is in the bill. It specifically says, this does, in no way will we allow a real estate transfer tax to be incorporated into this bill. But now we hear the representative from the 34th District advocating for a real estate transfers tax. That is, that's much better than what we have right now. It's certainly much more fairer to the elderly and the working poor who own homes. But let me tell you something, a real estate transfers tax still does not provide the equity and the fairness that I believe that is necessary. Having said that, I believe it would be, if the representative is serious, I believe it would be a first step in the right direction. Massey?
I have a very brief closing statement, if I may.
Yes, sir.
You know, I, I concur that you're, you're fighting for Murray County. The problem I have, you're included my county in it, without my permission, without talking with me, or the seven members of my delegation. And we represent the best interest of all the citizens of Rutherford County. I've got 21 county commissioners, and of last night, four have contacted me, and three have asked me to vote for it. The other one didn't say anything. He just wanted to know where, where the bill was. We all need help. I mean, like I said, you're experiencing, just beginning to experience what, what Rutherford, Murray is beginning to experience what Rutherford did for the last 30 years. So we've been there, and we've managed it, and we've had to make a lot of choices. But in the end, Rutherford County should not be linked with Murray. If Murray wants a special act or to change theirs, or to have a special law passed for Murray County to have the freedom to do what it wants, you can do what you want, but I don't want to include my county in it, especially when no one has met with us as a delegation and asked if we wanted to be in it. And that's the big problem I have with it. You know, this, this legislation, Mr. Chairman, has changed. There is a lot of information, some true, some not true, some ambiguous. I have, in my 30 years in politics at the grassroots level, and 18 years as a committeeman, and seven years as a legislator, I have experienced all kinds of a legislation and experiences, and disappointments, and personal attacks, and accomplishments. But this bill has, and it's not necessarily aimed at the sponsor, but many of the supporters has been deceptive. It's, in my opinion, anti-capitalist, anti-growth, anti-affordable housing. It's a liberal tax-and-spend piece of legislation that I can't support. I think that if everyone meaningfully got together, especially, I'm talking to Rutherford, Murray, and all the counties, would meaningfully get together over the summer, if this bill should fail, or if it doesn't, still need to get together, and honestly talk about a solution, trying to do an end run around all the different groups and all the different legislators, get together and see if we can come up with a viable alternative that can both help the counties and help high-growth counties, and make as many people happy as possible.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's what we're trying to do. So, there was no end around any different groups. It's a funny thing about a telephone. You know, not only does it receive calls, it can make calls. And I have spoken to numerous home builders and realtors about this issue. Everybody has my cell phone number. It's no secret. If you don't have it, it's 615-519-3184. Everybody has it. There's a reason why everybody has it, because I try to make myself available. Some days are better than others. But there was no end around. If the real estate community, the home building community, or any other community want to reach out to me, or any of you, all of us are available, especially on this issue that's going to determine the future of our county, not for the next 10 or 20 years, but for the next generations, plural. And so, we have to get this right. There is no group that is more important than any other group. There's no special group that gets special access. It's the property taxpayers of Rutherford County that we're trying to protect. So if you're in that group, you, yeah, you get special access, regardless of what other groups you're in. Having said that, when one group subsidizes the activities, the financial activities of another group, as demonstrated by the fact that we're under the 2006 adequate facilities tax, and we cannot pay for the growth, let me tell you something, that is anti-capitalism. When one group subsidizes another group financially, that by definition is anti-capitalism. So that's what we have going on right now. The sad part about the representative's comments was that I invited the entire delegation over the course of a week into my office, between the end of November and in the first week of December, and every single one of them got a briefing in anticipation of what my plans were, along with the county commission. Moreover, if I understand it correctly, Commissioner Harris convened a meeting of the steering committee, and the steering committee had the entire delegation up here, and they were asked about it. I believe they were asked about it by Commissioner Rutherford, if I'm not mistaken. Moreover, there was a Chamber of Commerce capital connection where the delegation was in attendance, and they were asked about it. And specifically, Senator Reeves asked me to speak on it, and I spoke on it then. Again, there was a Farm Bureau meeting right before the vote, where the delegation was attendance, and a citizen stood up and asked how they were going to vote. The representative got in a heated discussion about it. The lobbyist that this commission allowed me to hire was engaged with all eight members of the Property Management Subcommittee. So for any member of the delegation, but particularly this member, to say nobody contacted him, or nobody contacted the delegation, is absolutely false. They were engaged in the very beginning. We tried to stay engaged through the process, with limited success, I might add, right to the very end. Those are the facts. Massey?
Before, I would like to say one thing, since something was said about me that was not-
You are, wait, you took one minute, sir.
I don't need a minute.
Okay.
I'm not disingenuous about anything, Mr. Sapicky. You filed this bill without asking us, and I did not make the statement that I had not been contacted. I said my delegation had not been contacted. You came up on the House floor- had not been contacted. You came up on the House floor and told me at my desk, or called me over to your desk and told me that you were going to include Rutherford and just Murray. Not during the whole process or the original deal. But again, I made the statement that my delegation had not been contacted. Thank you.
In a minute, you will hear the conclusion of the video. It's very brief. But before you do, I want to share something with you. 30 minutes. So what I had done is I took a culmination of the remarks of the representative from the 34th district. But about halfway through the committee meeting, the chairman, Dale Carr, no relation, want to make that real clear, the chairman Dale Carr offered an amendment to the bill. And the amendment was to only, this bill would only apply to Rutherford and Murray County. The chairman offered an amendment to the bill that this bill would only apply to Murray and Rutherford County. That's very, very important. Massey?
I'll make this statement too, as a chairman, and if I make this statement as chairman, I will see that it happens. If this bill goes out, we will amend that amendment, and we'll take Rutherford County out. I'll be the first one to take it out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, why did I put that in there, or have that put in there? I had that, put that in there because in the space of less than 30 minutes, the chairman of the committee changed his mind. He went from asking to put an amendment on that this would only apply to Murray and Rutherford County, and less than 30 minutes later, at the conclusion of the committee meeting, he makes the comment that if this bill gets voted out and goes to full committee, he's going to put amendment on the bill in full committee to take Rutherford County out. Now, how did that happen? It happened because the representative from the 34th district's comments and arguments were that persuasive. That's how it happened. Rutherford County, and I'll conclude, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much for your indulgence, and commission members in the audience, I'll conclude by saying this. Rutherford County is not asking for anything special. We're not asking for anything unique. We're not asking for anything that Wilson County doesn't have, or Dixon County doesn't have, or Williamson County have. And if you want to find out if growth is dead over there, I suggest you go to those counties and take a look. I can promise you that it's not. Indeed, we're not asking for anything different that Murfreesboro doesn't have, or Smyrna, or Laverne. Smyrna and Laverne and Murfreesboro have impact fees. Smyrna and Laverne have three different impact fees. Murfreesboro is getting ready to assess an impact fee. Wilson, Dixon, Williamson have development taxes that they can raise. And of course, they're discreet and careful, because they know there's a balance there. Rutherford County does not have that option. And all the county, all the mayor and the county commission were trying to do is give us just a little flexibility in paying for the growth that we're drowning in. Thank you very much for your indulgence. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. Steering Committee, Chairman Craig Harris, I'd ask that you come up and read the resolution. Steering Committee met a couple of weeks ago, I think week before last, and passed the resolution that you're about to be presented. And in special session, and this commission decided to meet in special session to consider this resolution. Chairman Harris?
Resolution requesting passage of private act entitled the Rutherford County Adequate Facilities Tax of 2023. Whereas, Rutherford County has experienced and will continue to experience exponential growth, and whereas, Rutherford County needs methods to fund growth, and whereas, the state legislation enacted the County Powers Relief Act in 2006 as codified in TCA 674-202901. Whereas, since 2006, Rutherford County has experienced and continued to experience exponential growth beyond that contemplated in the County Powers Relief Act, justifying the need to levy alternative taxes to fund growth. And whereas, a proposed amendment to the County Powers Relief Act, a copy of which is attached hereto as Exhibit A, was presented before the Tennessee General Assembly Property and Planning Subcommittee of the Local Government Committee that would have allowed for a county to enact an adequate facilities tax by private act and public referendum before December 1st, 2023. However, said proposed amendment failed and did not advance out of said subcommittee. Whereas, despite said amendment failing in said subcommittee, there may be another opportunity during the current state legislative session for said amendment to be reintroduced and advanced through the state legislative process. And as such, the Rutherford County Commission dims it to be in request, the Tennessee General Assembly enact the private act entitled the Rutherford County Adequate Facilities Tax Act of 2023, a copy of which is attached hereto as Exhibit B. Should be, should the Tennessee General Assembly adopt the amendment to County Powers Relief Act as described above, or otherwise provide for the ability of Rutherford County to adopt the attached private act? Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that it hereby respectfully requests the Tennessee General Assembly to enact the attached private act 2023. Should the Tennessee General Assembly adopt the amendment to the County Powers Relief Act as described above, or otherwise provide for the ability of Rutherford County to adopt the attached private act? Be it further resolved that should the Tennessee General Assembly enact said private act, that it shall have no effect unless it is approved by a majority of voters in a referendum election in Rutherford County taking place prior to December 1st, 2023, or otherwise presented to the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners for ratification as determined by the Tennessee General Assembly. Be it further resolved that the resolution be forwarded by appropriate county officials to the Rutherford County Legislative Delegation and/or others as deemed proper. Resolve this 30th day of March 2023rd by two-thirds vote of the county legislative body of Rutherford County, Tennessee.
Chair will entertain a motion.
I so move.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner P. Discussion.
I do.
Mr. Harris?
When I, when, you know, we did the adequate facilities tax of $1. The reason that I felt that was a good move is because I didn't see that a guy building a 10,000 square foot house should pay the same as a guy building a 1,500 square foot house. He is correct. I felt that it was, at that time, the best thing for us to raise revenue. I mean, you know, I have talked to the Realtor Association yesterday and had a meeting with them. And I think that, let me say this about Mayor Carr. Me and Mayor Carr see the direction of this county different. But he did everything he could. He did everything he could. He was dealt a bad hand. He had, he had special interests against him. He had, our delegation, most of them against him. He had, one delegate made it personal. And I think he did all he could do. And thank you. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Beverly.
I'm new here, like many more on this commission. And the debt is concerning, both, oh, excuse me. I'm new on this commission. And like many others, I'm concerned about the debt. We can't say no to schools, because if we do, industry will follow, and the bills will still be due. And at that point, it doesn't matter what we're looking at with the development tax. There's no development to be had. I don't want to be, stand here and say that we're going to chase development away with this increase. I've seen firsthand where a home was listed on January 24th, a new construction pre-build, and in just two months, it's gone up $15,000. And we're hearing that an impact fee increase or a development tax increase is going to drive away home sales? No, it's not. We have missed out on an opportunity to generate revenue over the growth this county has experienced over the past 10 years. But we say today, no more. We're going to take advantage of that growth. We're going to take advantage of the fact people want to live here, and that growth will sustain growth. And that's why the support of this resolution is going to accomplish just that. We're not any different than Murfreesboro, having to entertain their increase in their development tax. The only difference is, we're having to ask the state legislature for permission, and this resolution takes care of that.
Anyone else? Commissioner Reed.
Commissioners, I've stood here before you, talking about this. And at our last commission meeting, I had the opportunity to address you, concerning about my concerns about where we are as far as the county is concerned, as our growth is going. And serving as chairman of the Planning Commission, I see that every time we meet here. But what we're looking at here this evening, and what we're trying to do, is trying to accomplish something that we didn't do by losing the last vote. And I think I mentioned in steering, and I think our mayor referred to just a little while ago about a statement I made there. I think we were doing this as another alternative rather than our property taxes. And I had mentioned at steering that I said, you know, this is a chance that we can have some relief there, rather than sticking it on a property taxes. And, and I also mentioned at that meeting there that, you know, I'm one of those individuals that does receive social security. I know I don't look that old, but, but I do. Yeah, somebody said, yes, I do. So, but, but I understand the situation, that if you are receiving that type of income, and that's a major part of your income, I know what those checks are involved with. Fortunately, I worked for a number of years and had an organization that helped me save. And I retired in a situation where those checks are not what I totally live on, but I did something a little different than a lot of retirees did. I took that check and had to go to a different account. And I used that check as any other retired person would do. And from my social security check, I pay my electric bill, my water bill, those things of necessity. Just so as a commissioner, I understand what my constituents who do operate from that are operating from. And yes, I pay my property taxes out of that account. And there are several months I have to save that social security check to pay those taxes. But I also mentioned that evening that I'm one of those that sort of have gotten into a routine of when I pay my property taxes, due to the fact of the way I've done my income tax. But I come up here during that, those January, February months, and a lot of times just to see those individuals who come and pay those taxes. And a lot of times, it's couples of my age that have saved those joint checks together. And they come in there and pay those property taxes together. And I have the opportunity to sit and talk to some of them. And I think that's what I feel tonight, the importance of what we're trying to do here, and what the mayor is trying to do here, is try to put a little bit of relief on our citizens out here. Hopefully, this will give us a little bit of a break in what we're doing here. But we're in a county that continually sees growth, and we're in a county that continually sees a need for things that property taxes will have to be where they are. But I too will support this this evening, hoping for something to happen, that maybe this will give us this break. But I think it's important we do this for the citizens of Rutherford County.
Mr. Kush?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I just want to be clear on a couple of notes on the resolution, both the one that Chairman Phillips, I mean Chairman Harris read, and the Appendix B. And Nick, help me out here. And help me out on the calendar. There's just a few days or weeks left in Nashville for this to be heard. Is that correct?
So Chairman Kush, what we have is the, the current structure of the General Assembly is that the committees are closing. It's my understanding that Property and Management Subcommittee has closed down. However, there is some talk coming out of the Speaker's office, because this was the Speaker's amendment, that there may be an opportunity to reintroduce this bill from another bill, that there's a caption out there. You know, I'm not, I'm going to be blunt. That's extremely unlikely. But it's still like, it's still out there. And I want to make sure, and Chairman Phillips and I have talked about this, in the unlikely event, and it is very unlikely, that they do reopen, and we're in a position to do something, I just want us to be prepared.
Right.
I don't want us to regret them opening up the committee, and then we miss the window to pass this resolution to take advantage of it, if that makes sense.
In perfect sense. And that's what I needed to know. And if, if that opportunity presents itself, and should they agree and, and pass, then it still has to go to a referendum by December 2023, right? So there's two hurdles. Downtown Nashville, and then with the county referendum. Okay. So if opportunity number one does not present itself, then this resolution is dead, and we start with a new plan.
If I may.
Please.
I want to make something, you bring up a very, very important point. No other county has submitted to a referendum of this type in Tennessee. Not only, this is such a, this is a hurdle that we accepted, that no other county has to jump over. I want to make that very clear. But yes, we would have to go to referendum.
And to answer your question, Commissioner K, I think the answer is yes.
Okay.
So if you want to rephrase the question again, to set the stage, you can. But I think you said if, if step one doesn't happen, if Nashville doesn't pass what we're needing to pass in order to get this done, you're back to where you are right now.
We're back to square one.
Correct.
So, so we could, we could start a new resolution, we could amend whatever we have talked about up to this point.
You, you could. You'd have to wait probably till next legislative session if it involved any changes to state law or a new private act.
Right. Okay. Because, because one, one thing, you know, at, at steering, when we, when the steering committee met, you know, this resolution was, was already written, we just had some blanks to fill in, really, right? So we were fresh off an evening of a disappointing afternoon. You know, I'm the one that threw out the $5,000 number. $5,000 is still a good number. But, you know, after I slept on it, my concern was, okay, how equitable is that? And it was already mentioned tonight by a few people, that if I'm a retiree that wants to downsize, or if I'm a new couple that wants to build a 1,200 square foot townhouse, should I pay a $5,000 impact fee? Or if I'm building a $1.2 million home somewhere else, should I just be limited to that $5,000 impact fee? So after I slept on it, I thought, a square footage fee makes more sense, which is what we have in place now. So I'm going to support this bill, this resolution. If it gets picked up, it gets picked up. And if it goes to referendum, it'll go to referendum. If we have an opportunity to start fresh, I'm going to rethink the square footage idea, and just push for additional than the dollar per square foot we're getting now, and get that up there where it needs to be. So I hear everybody, we've all been inundated by emails, texts, calls. We all need to sit down and get together and work this out. But I, I, you know, I shot off the hip with the $5,000 number, slept on it, and think a- off the hip with the $5,000 number, slept on it, and think a per square foot makes a lot more sense than just a lump sum, whether I'm building a doghouse or a mansion. So I just want that to be on the record. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner K. Anyone else? Commissioner P.
Well, I've been here a pretty good while. Some people probably say too long, but I've got a pretty long memory, too. We've been working to try to have a more equitable way to pay for the services that we give to our county for over 20 years. That's an easy give. We've worked, I've worked with home builders, I've worked with realtors, we've done studies. As a matter of fact, this year, all 21 of us sent to our delegation a request that they do accept the bill that was voted down in committee. I don't know how anybody could say they hadn't been asked, they didn't know anything about it, and we've been screaming for 20 years. There's so many things that we've done that are right. You know, I, I'll read you some statistics. I'll get my face to show it up here. Top five counties in this state, which Rutherford, right at the verge of being the fourth largest, our tax rate is the lowest. It's $1.61. Hamilton, next biggest by a couple thousand people, is $2.23. Knox County is 212. Davidson County is 295. Shelby is 339. Reason I'm quoting these is because we have done a good job taking care of the county's finances. You know, point in fact, we're one of the only, what is it, three now, counties that has a AAA bond rating. We didn't do that by being stupid. We didn't do, get that by not doing things that we should do to take care of this county and our citizens. But what we've seen, and last year particularly bad, is the reassessment year. I know, Laura, I don't know if you looked at those before you were elected, but your district and my district had the largest increase, and some of them were like almost 60% increase in tax base. And I mean, it was ridiculous. Now, we bit the bullet, and we pulled money out of our debt service last year, and we didn't need to, because we're going to need to put that back, guys. But we couldn't say, hey, here's a 60% tax increase to you guys, and they say if we put one cent out there, they'd have said, well, all that 50% increase came right from the county commission. That didn't. That came from rising poverty days in this county. And we've done things over the years to help our citizens. You know, we've frozen, and we're, I think we were the first county in the state. I know I was getting calls from people out of Shelby County and Bristol, wanting to know how we did it, and please go ahead and do it, where we froze our property taxes for our citizens that were over 65. Now the state came back in, and they set the level. I've had people complain to me, you say, you froze it for everybody. Well, no, you didn't. Well, no, I didn't. I would have if I could have. But the state sets the level, and I think it's about probably 46,000, somewhere in that neighborhood, for a household, you freeze your property taxes. Forty, well, no, it's higher than that now. But at any rate, you know, we try to look at everything. I've been on a planning commission. I used to be a builder, by the way. A lot of you never knew that, but when I was on a planning commission, I was endorsed by the Home Builders Association many times. And guess why? Because I supported them, and I helped them. And I think I did the right thing by doing that, and I still would help them and support them. I have family members that are realtors. You know, we're not taking a shot at anybody. What we're asking for from our legislators, because that's where the stumbling block is, and not just them, it's the people that are pulling the strings and putting the money to get them reelected, is the Home Builders Association and the Realtors Association are holding this up. Now, we've got nothing against these folks. No, I, I personally, you know, I liked seeing that open field across the street from me. Some of it's just sold last weekend, and that rock out there that I thought was rock was actually made out of gold, and I couldn't afford any of it. But this, this county's growing whether we want it to or not, and we've got to be able to keep our chin up above water, and we're on tiptoes right now. And I promise you, without some kind of help here, we're going to have the largest tax increase that you've seen, that I've seen since I've been up here, in the next year, if not the next year. And it does not look good, as far as us being able to maintain ourselves where we're at, the level that we're at, and also to house these new students that are coming in. Now, the school director said the other day, we got 2% growth. Well, I got news for you guys, we were having 4.5% growth several years ago, and we were building a school to a school and a half a year, and we hadn't built a school since Plainview, and what's that, three years now? So we're behind. And, you know, school board, you like them or hate them, all they're asking for is a place to put those students in there. And the mayor did a good job of pointing out what it costs to students to put a student in that chair. And I used to go talk to some of these classes. These kids would be half asleep, and I'd ask them, I said, you know how much it costs for you to sit in that chair? And they didn't have any idea. At that time, it was around $6,000. And that kind of hurt them up. You know, they didn't realize it costs that much for them to sit in that chair. I said, I want you to pay attention, because I'm paying a lot of money for you to sit there. I said, I want you to listen. But I got to calculating. My father put four of us through high school from, I have kindergarten back then, but one through 12. And I calculated, you know, at that time, what the rate was, and let's just say it was $6,000 a student. Well, there were four of us, 12 years, and then I calculated what he was paying in taxes. Well, Dad would have had to live till he was over 350 years old to be even, just to pay for the school tax, and that didn't count any of the others' taxes. So we've done a good job as far as taking care of that, but we're at a push comes to shove point, and we need the help from our legislators, we need the help from our home builders, we need the help from our realtors, and everyone else in this county, and I hope people are paying attention. I know when they get their tax bill this coming year, they will, I know they did last year, because I got a lot of calls from them. But I wholeheartedly support this, and I think it's, it's important to everybody in this room that lives here in this county to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner P. Anyone else? Once again, we've had a motion and a second to approve the resolution to adopt a private act in relation to the adequate facilities tax. For this, we're going to be on the board, and if everyone is ready, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Thank you, commissioners. It's a unanimous vote. I'm supposing, I'll need a little help from our attorney and our county mayor, and possibly Craig Harris, our chairman of chairing. We will forward this resolution to our legislative delegation, Speaker of the House.
So what we will do, with the permission of the commission, is we will send this to the Speaker of the House, and to all seven members of the delegation, and I will consult with our lobbying team and determine if this also would need to go to the Property Management Committee Chair Dale Carr, and the committee, Mr. Chairman Crawford. So, and I'll make, I'll, and I'll let them make that determination with permission from the chair.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Couple of quick announcements. I answered Commissioner Harris, Chairman Harris, no, a little bit ago, and let me say that's from a legal perspective. Public comments are just that. Public comments are not questions and answer periods, so asking questions and coming up with answers is not allowed under our rules as it relates to public comments. And if, if I sounded short, I apologize for that, especially Chairman Harris. Our next meeting will be a regularly scheduled meeting on April the 13th. And let me go ahead and say, I appreciate very much tonight Sheriff Mike Fitzhugh and his sheriff's deputies being here with us tonight, Lisa Crowell and, and her staff being here, supporting us tonight in this special meeting, Michael Smith also being here, and Nick Christiansen, our attorney, also being here. Thank you for being attendance in this special meeting tonight. But especially our Mayor Carr and being here and being prepared to present this resolution, and actually kind of going through the history of, of what this county has, has done. And once again, that's heartfelt, and we appreciate you guys being here. We're going to do a brief, very brief shout-out tonight. I know that's not on our agenda, but I don't care, I'm the chairman. A few shout-outs, and I know Commissioner Rather's got one, and Commissioner Rather?
This is a special call meeting. This is a special shout-out to three deputies. We all saw it in the news, in the paper, everywhere else, that saved a guy from dying in his burning house. They went through doors, windows, whatever they had to do. And there were three of them. Y'all may have to have me with the last name on the first one, although I've tried to verify it. Ethan Schenefield, is that right? Okay. Ethan's not here tonight. Jamie McMurray, who's not here tonight. McMurphy?
Murphy.
Jamie Murphy. Did you correct Chief Spence that it's Murphy and not McMurray? And Steve Hill. Steve Hill is standing at the door back here. Wave. This is our sheriff's department, and they're a special group. We talk about special interest groups, our sheriff's office, and even our, any of our first responders, a special group, and Rutherford County should be proud. Thank you.
Thank you. For those of you that know Commissioner Rather, that was a very short shout-out for Commissioner Rather, and we appreciate that, and Michael, God loves you and I love you. Anyone else? Any shout-outs? I'd like to give a quick shout-out to Commissioner Joshua James for being here. He probably snuck out the back door from his guard duty service tonight to be here, and we appreciate you being here. It was a surprise, but a present supplies, making this a full-fledged 21 commissioners in attendance tonight. Thank you, Commissioner James, for making those arrangements to be here. Once again, I, as I've said many, many times, I can't tell you how much I appreciate your attendance, your participation, and as we continue to move forward, the next two months are going to be the most challenging months that this commission, this Rutherford County Commission, has ever faced. Be attentive, work hard, and look out, not only for your next-door neighbor, but for all citizens of Rutherford County. Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.